Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Annapolisani.
Here.
Councilmembers of chair.
Here.
Donlin.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Mayor Sociana.
Okay, please stand for the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Please stand for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you. The notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act for this meeting have been satisfied. A copy of the annual notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press and the Coaster, posted in Town Hall and filed in the office of the municipal clerk on December 27th, 2018. The fire exit procedures, there are two emergency exits on the wall to my right that will take you to the front of the building and another on my left that will take you to the rear parking lot. All cell phones must be turned off. If you need to make a call, please step outside and leave the meeting room. Okay, council comments. Start with Councilman Inachara.
Uh, I actually don't have any comments. You usually start over there, but then because you're first, but I'm good.
Yeah, I'm gonna do it my way.
Wow, alright. I'm gonna let Chris know. No. He's watching. Hi, Chris. I have no comments.
Uh, Councilman Fisher.
Sure, so Councilman Inachara and I had the pleasure of going to Noah Kruger's Eagle Scout swearing or ceremony the other day. Congratulations to Noah and his family. I do want to announce that the Ocean Township Police Department is having their night out on 8/6, August 6th, Tuesday, 4:00 to 8:00 PM, and that's at the Ocean Township Municipal Pool. And that is all I have for now.
Thank you. Councilwoman Donlin.
I just want to say that the Township of Ocean Historical Museum has a new exhibit up on the 100-year anniversary of women's suffrage, and it's a phenomenal exhibit. I encourage everyone to go visit it. We're very lucky to have such a great museum in town and the exhibit is excellent.
Thank you. Before we go any further, the planning board meeting is being held tonight at 7:00 PM. It actually started, it's at the high school, so if anybody's here for that meeting, that meeting is being held over there. After our meeting, go over there and hear the planning board as well. The Italian Festival will be held next week. It starts on Wednesday, August 7th. It goes through Sunday, August 11th. Plenty of entertainment, plenty of food, lots of fun. Looking forward to that event, and thank you for mentioning National Night Out. There's gonna be entertainment, free admission to the pool with your town, with an ID that shows that you live in town. Okay, the purpose of the public portion is solely to ask questions and understand resolutions and vouchers that appear on the agenda and is not for an occasion for a public hearing on an ordinance. All questions not related to an item on this agenda should be asked during the public comments portion of the conclusion of the meeting. Does anybody have any comments that relate to the agenda only? Seen here none. Consent agenda. We have the minutes from the July workshop, July 11, 2019, workshop and public meetings. Can someone please offer?
I'll offer.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers of chair.
Yes.
Donlin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Annapolisani.
Yes. Okay, consent agenda resolutions 19-126 through 19-140. Can someone please offer?
I'll offer.
Second?
I'll second.
Councilmembers of chair.
Yes.
Donlin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Annapolisani.
Yes. Okay, vouchers in the amount of $7,359,890.91. Can someone please offer?
I'll offer.
Second?
I'll second.
Councilmembers of chair.
Yes.
Donlin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Annapolisani.
Yes. Individual action on resolutions 19-. We just did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Look, I'm ahead of you this time. Wow.
That's why you're the deputy mayor.
Resolution 19-120 to authorize a professional service contract with Greg Blash from the firm of Leon S. Savakian Incorporated for Engineering Services for the period of July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2020. Can someone please offer?
I'll offer.
Second?
I'll second.
Councilmembers of chair.
Yes.
Donlin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Annapolisani.
Yes. Resolution 19-132 to authorize the acceptance of grants received from the Community Hope Fund for various programs sponsored by the Department of Human Services. Can someone please offer?
I'll offer.
Second?
I'll second.
Councilmembers of chair.
Yes.
Donlin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Annapolisani.
Yes. Resolution 19-133 to authorize a purchase of various equipment for the new police department vehicles from Elite Vehicle Solutions, state contracts numbers T-0106-81334 and T-0106-81308, at a cost not to exceed $47,562.78. Can someone please offer?
I'll offer.
Second?
I'll second.
Councilmembers of chair.
Yes.
Donlin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Annapolisani.
Yes. Resolution 19-134 to approve a Chapter 159 budget amendment for the following. A, Community Hope Fund Lead Program Grant, $2,000. B, Community Hope Fund Summer Morning Recreation Grant, in the amount of $1,350. C, the Community Hope Fund Project Extend School Year Grant, in the amount of $2,000. D, the Community Hope Fund Summer Project Extend Grant, in the amount of $2,400. E, the Community Hope Fund Theater Initiative Grant, in the amount of $1,500. And F, the Mid Jersey JIF Safety Awareness Program Grant, in the amount of $4,100. Can someone please offer?
I'll offer.
Second?
I'll second.
Deputy, uh, Councilmembers of chair.
Yes.
Donlin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Annapolisani.
Yes. Resolution 19-135 to award a contract to JC Contracting from Raway, New Jersey for the installation of crosswalks on a portion of West Park Avenue at a cost not to exceed $49,985. Can someone please offer?
I'll offer.
Second?
I'll second.
Councilmembers of chair.
Yes.
Donlin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Annapolisani.
Yes. Resolution 19-136 to authorize the utilization of True Green Limited Partnership, doing business as True Green, to provide fertilizing services at the township parks and recreation facilities at a cost not to exceed $25,000. Can someone please offer?
I'll offer.
Can someone second?
I'll second.
Councilmembers of chair.
Yes.
Donlin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Annapolisani.
Yes. Resolution 19-137 to authorize the purchase of a safety, public safety speed trailer from Traffic Plan in Farmingdale, New Jersey, at a cost not to exceed $10,400. Can someone please offer?
I'll offer.
Someone second?
I'll second.
Councilmembers of chair.
Yes.
Donlin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Annapolisani.
Yes. And Resolution 19-138 to authorize a tax collector to issue a refund credit to those taxpayers who have received favorable state tax appeal judgments. Can someone please offer?
I'll offer.
Can someone second?
I'll second.
Councilmembers of chair.
Yes.
Donlin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Annapolisani.
Yes. Resolution 19-139 to authorize the confirmation of the sale of a portion of Block 15.02, Lot 9, Garfield Avenue, to Alan Shalom at a fee of $10,010. Can someone please offer?
I'll offer.
Second?
I'll second.
Councilmembers of chair.
Yes.
Donlin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Annapolisani.
Yes. Resolution 19-141 to authorize a contract with North American Insurance Management. We pulled that.
You have to just tell them that.
Okay. Division of Accra Sore, we actually pulled that from the agenda. That'll be on next month. Resolution 19-142 to authorize a contract with USI Consulting Group, USICG, to ensure the township's compliance with the regulations of GASB 74/75. Can someone please offer?
I'll offer.
Can someone second?
I'll second.
Councilmembers of chair.
Yes.
Donlin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Annapolisani.
Yes. Resolution 19-143 to authorize a professional services contract with Leon S. Savakian to provide the engineering services for the 2019 road program at a fee not to exceed $274,950. Can someone please offer?
I'll offer.
Can someone second?
I'll second.
Councilmembers of chair.
I'm voting no, and if you give me a second. And we had a nice conversation in workshop about this. This is the work that needs to be done on the 2019 road program. Candidly, it's a no-bid purchase, if you will, or contract. There's pros and cons to this. I'm not in favor of not bidding it out. The negative side of us declining this is that the road program may not start until next year. I'm willing to sacrifice the road program. I think it's gonna pass regardless, but I just want to say that I'm not in favor of a $274,000 purchase that didn't go out to bid, so I'm voting no.
Councilmembers, Donlin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Annapolisani.
And just for a quick explanation, we did check with the township manager who has some experience in this, who basically said that this was about 15% of the cost. In other instances, with other engineering firms, it comes out to 20% to 25%, so I feel comfortable voting yes on this. Okay, ordinances for adoption. We have ordinance number 2320, an ordinance amending Chapter 7 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of Ocean, 1965, entitled, "Property Maintenance and Housing." Can someone please open public discussion on ordinance 2320?
I'll open public discussion on ordinance number 2320.
Can someone second that?
I'll second.
Councilmembers of chair.
Yes.
Donlin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Annapolisani.
Yes. Anybody want to make a comment on ordinance 2320? This would be the time to do that.
Yeah, Mr. Leferson, Cliffwood Road, Oakhurst. Could you maybe go a little more detail about this? This has got a lot to do with property maintenance. You have a lot of people in the town that don't cut their lawns. They just don't take care of their property. Up at Wayside, 90% of the people take care of their properties. A lot of people in Oakhurst around here, you have a lot of people that bought houses. They fix them up, they rent them out. You got 10 or 12 people living in them, and the houses look terrible. So if you could go into a little more detail about this and give me some facts about the change that was made in it.
Mike, do you have that?
This is the bedroom one.
Yeah, this isn't about maintenance.
This has nothing to do with the outside.
Oh, really? So what is it, could you explain it to me?
Bedroom size, Mike, you want to go into?
Yeah, um, this is, I'll read the section for you. Every approved bedroom occupied by one person shall contain at least 70 square feet of floor area with at least one permanent closet and entry door. Every bedroom in a one-bedroom apartment occupied by more than one person shall contain at least 50 square feet of floor area for each additional occupant. Every living room shall contain at least 120 square feet. B, in any living unit having more than one bedroom, the requirements set forth in requirement A shall apply to at least one bedroom. Every second bedroom occupied by more than one person shall contain at least 40 square feet of floor area for each additional person. Any additional bedrooms occupied by more than one person shall contain 120 square feet for two people and additional 50 square feet for each additional person. C, children under age two shall not be considered additional occupants. I know it probably sounds confusing that this is part of that, but it falls under the property maintenance portion, even though it doesn't have anything to do with.
Okay, but this is inside, so in other words, if, uh, a lot of people have bought houses around where I live in Oakhurst, just down the street, and they've taken the basements and put bedrooms in them, and they have, uh, they have two or three families living in these houses. They rent them out. So would this, this would come, this would enforce this in some way?
Just to clarify, this ordinance has existed for a long time.
That's what I thought, I thought.
Yeah, there was some tweaking to it based on some issues we had. So, I mean, the bottom line is if somebody has families living in their basement and they exceed, uh, you know, whether or not they've been approved for bedrooms is one issue, whether they improved it without getting permits. Obviously, if they're violating those aspects of the law, yeah, the town can go and enforce that if we know about it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions in regard to ordinance 2320?
I'll make a motion.
Seen here none. Can someone please make a motion to close ordinance 2320?
I'll make a motion to close discussion on ordinance number 2320.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Councilmembers of chair.
Yes.
Donlin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Annapolisani.
Yes. Can I have action on ordinance number 2320?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 2320?
I'll second.
Councilmembers of chair.
Yes.
Donlin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Annapolisani.
Yes. Um, ordinance number 2325, an ordinance amending Chapters, Chapter 12 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of Ocean, 1965, prohibiting parking on a portion of Beechwood Avenue. Can someone please open discussion on ordinance 2325?
I'll move to open discussion on ordinance number 2325.
Second?
I'll second.
Councilmembers of chair.
Yes.
Donlin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Annapolisani.
Yes. Public comment on ordinance 2325? Seen here none. Can I have a motion to close ordinance, uh, public, can I have a motion to close discussion on ordinance number 2325?
I'll move to close discussion on ordinance number 2325.
And I have a second.
I'll second.
Councilmembers of chair.
Yes.
Donlin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Annapolisani.
Yes. Action on ordinance number 2325.
I move to approve ordinance number 2325.
And publish according to law.
All those years' experience.
Second?
I'll second.
Councilmembers of chair.
Yes.
Donlin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Annapolisani.
Yes. Open public discussion on anything other than agenda items. Yes.
Yeah, thank you Deputy Mayor and Council. Yes.
Just, Brian, just, I think we recognize you, but just for the record.
Mr. Leferson, 236 Cliffwood Road, Oakhurst. I've come here tonight to express my dissatisfaction with the way the police department operates in the summertime. I'm a lifelong resident. I was born and raised in this town, and the house I live in right down the street, I've been here for 59 years. And when I drive around this town in the summertime, especially on Monmouth Road between like 7/11 and Rose L. Avenue, especially on Fridays, on Fridays, late Fridays. I also was involved in an automobile accident on the 19th on Wicca Pecah, where a resident from another town, I'm not gonna say where they come from because it could be prejudicial. All I can say is it's not New Jersey. The woman went through a stop sign and, uh, and I ran into her with my totally restored 1988 560 SL Mercedes, and I'm very, I'm still very upset about this. My complaint is, on Fridays, it's the worst day. I can, the traffic doesn't bother me. The traffic doesn't bother me. It's the way that people drive. The people that come here in the summer, and they do not have New Jersey license plates. They come from somewhere else, and I don't care where they come. I don't care if they come from Alaska. They don't stop at the intersection of Sherman Avenue, right over here. They don't stop at the intersection of Grand Avenue, Park Avenue. They drive like they, whatever they want to do. And they pull up to the stop sign, and they hold their hands up like this, and they tell you to stop, and they pull right out in front of you. And the chief says they've been writing tickets. But to be truthful with you, what we need to, what we need to do, this is what I'm, what I want to see is like, in the summertime, I want to see two sting operations along Monmouth Road, where they have extra police and, and cameras, and I want to see tickets. Tickets. If somebody's gonna get killed, I'm telling you, between, it's only a matter of time, and when that happens, you'll have 500 people at the next council meeting. And it may not be the people who live in New Jersey. So what I'm telling you is, in the summertime, it is unbelievable to drive in Oakhurst, parts of Oakhurst. Wayside, I can drive anywhere, anytime. I don't, I only have this problem in Oakhurst, and a little bit in Wanamassa. So what I'm saying to you, it's a small portion of the town, and I don't understand why the police and, and he's indicated to me that, and other people have indicated to me, that they don't have the, uh, the, uh, the extra officers, et cetera. All I can say is, in the summertime, the population in this town probably goes up 5,000 to 7,000 people. At least. Over here, in the wintertime, there's nobody that lives. And you get people that came here, they're on the May 9th meeting, and he was here, and they're complaining about their burger alarms going off, and he was here. I'm not complaining about my burger alarm going off and getting a fine for false, for false alarms. I'm coming here to complain about the way things are done in this town, and they don't write no tickets, and people's lives are in danger. And another thing is, I'm telling you, is on Saturdays, I can drive anywhere in Oakhurst. But then you gotta watch out for the bicycles, which I give anybody on a bicycle, I give them a ride away. They didn't write one ticket in the month of July for a bicycle infraction. And if, and people drive their bicycles on Saturdays down the middle of the road, down the middle of Monmouth Road, South Lincoln, and if you blow the horn at them, you know what they give you? They give you, I don't, I give you this. You understand where I'm coming from?
They say you're number one.
Yeah, no, no, they say I'm number one, yeah. So what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, chief, let me ask you a question, chief. If I, if I want to go to my church at 103 Monmouth Road, the First United Methodist Church, and I ride my bike down the middle of Monmouth Road. The middle of Monmouth Road.
Mr. Leferson, you can't ask a question to the chief of police. You're directing to the dais.
Okay, 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 okay. If I want to ride my bike to my church on a Sunday, and I drive down the middle of the road, how far do you think I would get on a Sunday? Not very far. And that's another thing in this town is, which I don't understand. Our type of government, there's nobody in this town that can tell him what to do, that he's not doing his job. Do you concur with that? Deputy Mayor, give me an answer.
I'm not concurring with anything right now.
So you, you'll agree with me?
I can't tell him what to do.
The manager, the manager will agree with me.
We, I cannot tell him how to deploy his officers or.
You already told me that, 'cause I went over that with you.
Absolutely.
Matter of fact, another thing is, last July, July 20th, I rode around with Mike. This manager we have is, he does a great job. He does a great job. I rode around with him last July 20th, and he saw exactly, and he agrees with me 100%. And I called the mayor a week and a half ago, and he agreed with me. But the mayor said, well, we can't do nothing because we have no control over the police department. So that's something, I don't know what you can do to change. Because this is, my opinion is, this is the worst year that I've ever seen it. Listen, everybody has a right to drive, et cetera, et cetera, but people's lives should not be endangered. Do you understand? People, if, and if I go up in these, listen, I done work up in these communities where these people come from, and if I drive them wrong way, I'm gonna, I've got tickets up there. We got parked in front of a wrong house, I've got tickets. These people don't get no tickets. What I want to see is, at least twice a year in the summertime, and we need to have more police officers out in the summertime. You need to hire special police officers in the summertime. You should be able to bring the revenue in through the tickets to pay for them, because somebody's gonna get killed in this town. You live, you live in Wayside, right? You don't have this problem in Wayside.
Correct.
Yeah, so if you want, if you want to meet, if any, you council people, want to meet with me on a Friday, I ask any of you, I will meet with you in my church, 103 Monmouth Road, and I will go for a ride, and I will show you exactly what goes on, like I did with him last year. So I would like an answer somewhat to see what you're, to see what you, if you consider this to be a problem in our town as newly elected, as elected people. You're the deputy mayor now, so give me an answer. I want to hear, I want to hear feedback.
I think that if there's an issue with lack of police coverage in the summer, the chief can bring it up to us during budget season, which will be coming up in January 2020. So if that's a discussion that needs to come up with the chief, he can bring it to us.
So nothing's gonna happen this summer?
It's August. Chief, absolutely. Didn't want to put you on the spot.
No, not a problem, this is what I do. Good evening, Chief Peters from the police department. So just to address some of Mr. Leferson's concerns. So one thing I can agree with him on is that, yes, this year has been a very busy year along these routes that he speaks about. I think that, as I explained to him at the beginning of the meeting, the demographics of this side of the township has changed, and it's always a dynamic, changing environment here. And everybody has the ability to come to this great town and enjoy it how they do. Some seasonally, some year-round. As far as his statement that we're not doing anything, I highly disagree with it, and I find it insulting, quite frankly. Mr. Leferson and I have had a relationship since I became chief in 2012 about this very issue. I myself was with Mr. Leferson in the Methodist Church parking lot along Monmouth Road, where he watched my, even me, stop cars and issue summonses because we had radio calls coming in, we had a lot going on. Our staffing at the moment, due to three retirements, some other ongoing personnel issues that I cannot speak about here, have yet left us a little understaffed this summer. And sometimes these things are out of my control. We were approved by the township manager early this year to hire two part-time special law enforcement officers twos to address some of the traffic issues to supplement and support our full-time staff. However, we did hire them, and one actually became a full-time officer, and the other now became our full-time special law enforcement officer two. So we've had these vacancies now for several months. The issue with these vacancies is that they are part-time hours. We cannot pay them, we cannot give them more than 20 to 24 hours. We pay them an hourly rate. them an hourly rate. However, most of the, um, candidates for that position opt to go to Long Branch, Belmar, Seaside, and the towns that can employ them up to eighty hours, because they're, they're considered under Title Forty-eight, seasonal towns. Um, therefore, most of those candidates don't want to work in Ocean Township for only twenty hours a week, um, because they can go work in these other bigger towns for a lot more hours and, and sometimes more money per hour.
Chief, is there a percentage that makes a town summer town, of how many people come in?
I- it's, it's mostly what they call resort, so you have to have something that brings that to it, and the main key theme usually is on the shore, on the shoreline, and having some, uh, method of saying the population goes from A to B due to the resort style of the town. Now, you can look at Long Branch, for example, a very good example of what resort could be, uh, the development along the waterfront there, um, it's, it's, it's unbelievable, it's unremarkable, actually, what they've done. Asbury Park is the same thing, Asbury Park employs, you know, almost twenty-five extra specials in a full, well, not say full-time capacity, but in a seasonal capacity, where they're able to get numerous hours, and, and it behooves a candidate who's a, a law enforcement special officer to go there, obviously, they, they're interested in making the money, uh, where they're kind of limited here. Now, come Septem-
Are we-
Oh, I'll say, come September, I think that those two part-time spots will be filled pretty quick, because the hours are a lot less in, in the shore, in these shore resort towns, and then we do get the candidates, uh, so it's, it's, it's kind of a little tough for us, we have those positions available, we don't have anybody right now that has submitted a resume for them, uh, and we know we've gone through this before, we actually went through this a couple of years ago, so I kind of brought it back again, just to test the waters, to see if we can get some, some people to come in for the summer, but we, but we got nobody. Uh, so that's a tough logistic for me to deal with, because now I can only play the cards that I have at hand right now. So, uh, you're aware that we had several retirements, the council is aware of the personal issues that have occurred this year, uh, it's left us short, we are in a hiring process right now, in fact, I spent the last three days interviewing, you know, numerous candidates, um, and we're going to spend tomorrow doing the same thing, I'm trying to, you know, we have to do it correctly, we have to do it thoroughly, I'm not just fast-tracking anybody through, um, to be a police officer, because we need police officers, you know, we, we have a process, it's lengthy, it's involved, the township manager, uh, is aware of it, in fact, uh, we're, we're going to be inter, interviewing some final candidates next week, so the process is moving, it's slow. Um, and then, you know, this is just a year that, when you are, uh, down on your staff, and you're trying to rebuild it, and we're right in, in the middle of the summers, you know, Mr. Lefferson brings up a good point. I cannot disagree with some of the complaints that he has. Uh, I've had to make some operational changes in the police department, that's, it's a temporary restructure, but I don't have a traffic bureau right now, and now I've had to remove detectives and put them in uniforms so that they are out on Fridays, like they were last week and the week before, and the cars are being stopped, the summonses are being issued, but if I assign two or three officers, and they start to work out that, they start to work in those areas, and then we start getting police calls, and those calls have to be answered. Somebody calls nine-one-one, the traffic stuff stops, and we go, and this is what's happening. So, accountability, I'm very accountable, I mean, and, and this council knows that, uh, and, you know, we do answer to whatever the citizens ask, Mr. Lefferson has called us numerous times, we tried to address where we can address, a lot of times, we do go where he asks us to go, we do issue the summonses, but can we be there, you know, he would like us there, and I, I can't blame him, I live here, too, so it's like, yeah, right, if we could be there from two-thirty P.M. to ten o'clock at night, it would be great, we can't do it, it's not realistic, and I would never tell him that we could do it. Can we put more efforts in there when we have the availability? Absolutely. And that's happening now. So, uh, I, I spoke with Brian in the beginning, before the meeting started, I said, look, you're just going to have to give us a chance, we have a lot of things happening this year that I haven't had in the past. He's impatient, I can't blame him, he's a resident, lives in town, he's trying to get from point A to point B, and somebody's, you know, being disrespectful to him because he doesn't want the bikes in the middle of the road, I give you. Uh, the bike enforcement, tough dynamic, I'd have nobody assigned specifically to bike enforcement, because I have people assigned to vehicle enforcement, which is a lot more dangerous, but again, you know, bikes in the middle of the road are not a great idea. I've addressed the community several times on bike safety, my, my traffic officers have addressed them on bike safety, we try to get the word through the community. Is issuing bike citations or violations to, to, to teens, and it, it doesn't set a good example, we're trying to really be out there and educate, is, is how we'd like to do the positive reinforcement, uh, going around and issuing summonses, I just don't think it's, it's, it's going to work. So we have that part of it, too, and I said, you know, uh, I, in time, it will be back up to full staff, and, you know, things will be much better, but in the meantime, we are, and I can honestly say it, doing the best we can, and we're not going to stop. So, um, Mr. Lefferson has my number, he speaks to my captains all the time, he speaks to the township manager, we are addressing-
And the township attorney.
And, and, oh, that's a new one on me. So, bottom line is, and as I told Brian, we're going to address this, okay, we're going to do the best we can, and I, and I don't know that we'll satisfy everything he needs, but I can tell him that we aren't ignoring it. Um, I am accountable to the township manager, he, under your former government, our former government, is my boss. Okay, is it deployment of officers? Yeah, that's one unique thing, but everything else, I still have my boss, the man I have to report to, give a monthly report to, weekly meetings, we discuss a lot of issues. And, and he fields a lot of community complaints that don't necessarily come to me directly, but when he gives them to me, we're on them. So, uh, Brian, I just got to ask you for a little more patience, we will work with you, and, you know, we're going to go out and try it, and I realize that next year could be worse. You know, the, the, the real estate dynamics here are really astronomically going out of control, but that's the way it is, that's, we have to deal with that. Will we increase the police department? Maybe, that's discussions I have to have with the township manager, I, you know, we, we have a budget to, we have budget constraints, I work within the budget that I actually work on the pre, previous year, and then, you know, we have to decide if we can add officers, you know, could we add some officers? Of course we could. Uh, is there enough money to go around and do all the things we want to do in a township? Well, that's, that's certainly up to the council and the township manager to decide every year when we prepare the budgets. So with that, I, you know, I thank you, and if, if there's anything else, Brian, you, you call Captain Torchur, Captain Sorrentino, and you know they'll, they'll answer you, but-
Steve, two, just two things real quick, um, first of all, you guys do a bang-up job, I mean, the, the police department, I think we are-
Thank you, appreciate it.
You know, do a great job. Um, the question I have is, you know, look, I get it, we're not near the beach, we're not a resort town, however, we do have a large influx of people that come in here. Is there any way to look into the status, to see if we could possibly get that changed so that maybe-
We could, and I have to work on this with the township manager probably more in the next, a month or two, about if we can move to another full-time special officer, because if we had a full-time position, we'll get a special officer, that, that's what the candidates want, they don't just want to work a few hours a week. Uh, and, and you remember, most, it, it is slightly a revolving door for us, because it's a stepping stone for a full-time job, which is great for us, because, you know, we get people with some experience, already have training, it, it's, it's really nice when we're looking for people. But that position in and of itself is something I have to look to make sure that we're not violating of the, of the Title Forty laws, uh, Title Forty-eight, actually, and, and obviously, uh, Mr. Arbis can help us with this, but right now, as it stands, we can have one full-time, uh, special law enforcement officer, forty hours a week, we can have that, and then the formula allows us up to eleven part-timers. I can't even get one, would I love to have eleven? Oh, yes, I would, but it's not.
But we couldn't get the status changed to like resort-
No, because I think that the law's pretty clear on what they consider as seasonal-
We're, we're not a resort town.
Right, we're not Wildwood, we're not Seaside, you know-
You're not on the shore.
Right, exactly, so, I mean, we're, we are in strange, um, but, uh, that's, that's the story.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Okay, thank you.
Can we depedize Brian?
Brian, we have to get you Donlin and Fisher's telephone numbers.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That was good. Brian, just, just for the record, you know where I, well, I think you know where I live, I'm on Robbie Drive, so I, I'm very familiar with Monmouth Road, I'm very familiar with South Lincoln, West Lincoln, the church, um, I don't disagree with anything you're saying, so, there, there, the traffic is there.
But, uh, Brian, I think what we're going to do is, we're creating a, uh, traffic safety liaison, and Fisher's going to be on that from now on?
Yeah, but, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, the chief is, is, he's a hundred percent right about that, because we are, even though, we're, we're called Township of Ocean, we don't have an ocean, we're not considered a summer town. The only way you're going to change that, I could be wrong, chief, is, is you're going to have to talk to the governor, probably, you're going to have to talk to the governor. The mayor's friendly with the governor, so maybe he can talk to him. But another thing is, I can tell you is, 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 but, but, what, I, I, I am not concerned with the traffic, you have traffic in the town, because there's more people that come in here. I'm concerned about the way people will come here in the summer, the way they drive, they have no respect, and it's dangerous, and somebody's going to get killed. Let me tell you something, um, I know what it's like to have a family, my stepson got killed in an automobile accident, in a single car accident in Oceanport, and the police came to my house at two o'clock in the morning, and me and my wife had to go down to Monmouth Medical Center to identify him, so I know what it's like, and we had to have a closed coffin, he was a passenger in a car. So I know what it's like when somebody gets killed in a car, and somebody's going to get killed, and if, and if, and it all depends what, what community they come from, if they come from a certain community, you'll have five-hundred people at this next meeting. Do you understand? You just think about what I'm saying, because I don't see, I, listen, the chief, you know, I, I, I agree with him, because, but he doesn't have the manpower. But all I'm asking for is, I'm not asking for him to sit on Deal Road or West Park Avenue, I'm asking him on Fridays, because these people come here in the summer, they don't work on Fridays, they take Fridays off. So they, they drive like it's, uh, you know, fast times at Ridgemont High, but listen, they should respect the people in our community, but they don't, and they need to be reeled in, is what I'm getting at, do you understand? And I want to see something done about it. I want to see police out there undercover writing tickets on Monmouth Road, even if you gotta, even if you gotta hire police and put them on overtime, because somebody's going to get killed, it, it's ridiculous. At Wayside, I, well, take it across Route Eighteen, there's not a problem in Wayside.
Uh, you let, let me correct that, Brian, because I live in Wayside, and I think I've had this conversation with you.
Yeah.
Uh, my wife has expressed some, you know, n- not the issue on Monmouth Road that you're dealing with, but similar sentiments, and I've experienced it as well, and I live in Wayside, so I, I've actually seen, let's call it, uh, anywhere from illegal to uncourteous uh, driving moves that have been taken, uh, even in Wayside, so.
Well, 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 listen, I concur, and that's another thing, is even with the, with these summer camps that these people run, and the way these people drive these buses, is another thing, is, it, it's, it's ridiculous. So, yeah, listen, a lot, listen-
That was brought up in the workshop meeting.
Yeah, so, you know, it is, it is, but, but what I'm saying is, my biggest complaint is between Seven-Eleven and Rose L. Avenue, and, and I'm telling you, I could take any one of you council people, and if you want to meet with me on a Friday around four, four-thirty, I will take you and show you exactly what goes on in this town, and you, and you, and you will be, your head will explode. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lefferson. Anybody else from the public? Jack?
Jack, Mamie, Maplewood Avenue, um, Oakhurst. Uh, I also noticed quite a big problem in the summertime with the influx of people, um, and I would agree that it's more the careless and reckless driving than the number or the volume of, of traffic that is the problem, even though the volume is a huge issue as well. I know that, um, in my area, the, there are two problem intersections that I see all the time, uh, the number, the one, the first one is the four-way stop at Larchwood and Park Avenue. Um, one of the stop lines is painted on the roadway, I think you should look into that, it's the east side, um, so people kind of roll past that stop sign into the intersection. A few weeks ago, uh, somebody almost hit my car, as, uh, I was there, stopped, fully at the stop sign, he wasn't even at the stop sign yet, and decided to just go low right, low right past it, didn't even stop, um, which is, uh, kind of rattled me. The next intersection is at the, um, Larchwood and South Lincoln, um, the stop sign there, when people come to a stop, they can't see to the left, because there's overgrown bushes and a hill that's blocking their view, so a lot of them, instead of stopping and rolling forward slowly like they're supposed to, they kind of just roll out and they're, end up like halfway in the middle of the intersection. Um, and I've only, I've only, I, I've almost been hit twice, just, uh, in the past three weeks alone, trying to make a left onto Larchwood from South Lincoln, just because people, um, roll right past it, they almost hit my car as I'm turning, so it's, uh, another matter of time issue. So either if we can get some, uh, someone to talk to the homeowner there to, to cut down those bushes, or, um, do some landscaping, maybe at the-
If it's blocking that sign, we'll, we'll take care of it.
And I did just say, Jack, so I do that road a lot, I told him, suggested that we put a stop-ahead sign ahead of that intersection, to your point.
Yeah, but at the same time, people aren't going to stop if they can't see, so that-
We'll take care of it.
You know, that if they can cut the, either, they have to remove some of the, the soil there, so that they can see down the roadway, and they can actually stop at the white line, or something else has to be done there.
Move the white line.
Move the whole road over. Um, but I also think that, uh, maybe at the beginning of each season, um, we should go into, you know, talk to all the members about, members of the community about traffic safety, um, you know, like the chief was saying.
You have done it, and you can do it again?
Um, I think like, but also, we have to think about going to the houses of worship in the other towns, because a lot of the people go to those, and they don't just go to the ones in, in Ocean Township, um, people go to the one in, there's one, there are some in Elbron, there are some in Deal, there are some in, um, Allenhurst, there's, they're all over the place, so, um, and I think it should be an ongoing effort, not just a one-time, because, uh, every year, I think there are more and more people that come, and, uh, there are some people that haven't heard the message, so maybe once a month even in the summertimes, I think it would be worthwhile.
That's it.
Thank you, Jack.
Deputy Mayor, real quick, I, I heard you mention earlier that you are appointing, uh, Councilman Fisher as a traffic safety liaison, now-
Absolutely, I'm making that, I'm making that move tonight.
Okay, I just want to tell you that, that is, uh, it's, it's probably a good idea, the more I start, I'm sitting here and thinking about it, you know, the whole part of even some of the complaints Mr. Lefferson has, is a three-prong situation. Yes, there's enforcement, enforcement, Jack brings up education, and then he also here said engineering, there's three things, there are three components to a lot of the things that are going on. Due to a lot of logistics and issues throughout the whole township, yeah, uh, at one time we were a lot better coordinated, uh, through the other town, uh, departments in the township. As far as our intersection signs, sight distances and growths, I, and I have to agree with what Jack said, we have a lot of intersections, and Councilman Chara can attest to that, that they need work, uh, the assignments have to go out, and, once our traffic safety bureau is back to staff, which I hope is by the fall, you know, this is something we can talk about, and, and I do welcome, uh, Councilman Fisher to be a part of all this, because I think that we're not, I'm not at every council meeting, uh, and, but that's okay, but if Mr. Lefferson comes here, or Jack comes here, you know, that's fine, I'm saying, but these things can, we could probably put together a, a more concerted effort, uh, and I do welcome that, if you'll take that on, Dave.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dave Fisher-
I'll second that. Community liaison for the police department.
Well, chief, I'm acutely aware of the traffic problems in Ocean Township, I have, uh, experienced everything and then some, and it would be my pleasure to help you out.
And, and, you know, seriously, we could actually meet, and I'll have you meet with representatives of my traffic bureau, uh, and maybe the operations captain, we could just sit down, if it's not once a month, once a quarter, of course, right now, it could be once a month, maybe even, maybe more.
I think it's critical, I think we got to go weekly.
Well, we could at this point, we could, uh, you know, I'll have to coordinate through that to the township manager, but at least-
I'm all for it.
Something off the ground, because, you know, there, 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 it's a concerted effort on a lot of the maintenance, uh, we're on the enforcement of it, but we're also on the engineering end of it, too, and, uh, we could suggest, you're not going to see the police department out there with chainsaws taking stuff down, it could come to that at some time, because we are weak for stuff to get done.
Chris will do that, when he's better.
When he's better. Uh, but, you know, those are the other things that are happening, the lines that aren't painted, everybody's aware of that, that, that's another issue that, that's been laying around for a while, I, I know that some of the monies from the road program do help us get those lines painted that are, are needed, and a lot of main roadways need them. So, uh, I think that by having like a, a fresh voice of council to actually sit down with us will, will help.
Yeah, you give them list of stuff, yeah, it's great.
I already got a list.
I like this.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
I did. Anybody else from the public? I would be remiss if I didn't mention why the mayor's not here, he had a minor procedure done, uh, he will be back in action at the next meeting, he is doing fine, much better, he needed a little bit of rest, but, uh, he rested short, he will be back, and I assure you, I did not poison him, as my friend Bonnie Cohen asked me if I did that, no, I did not. Okay, okay, seeing nobody else, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Second.
I'll second.